I will introduce item 7.3, mid-year budget. Consideration of resolution amending resolution number 2021-115 to amend fiscal years 2021, '22 adopted budget by adjusting reserves, fund balance, carryover, revenues, and appropriations. And B, consideration of resolution amending resolution 2021-116 to amend the position allocations for fiscal year 2021-22 to conform to the mid-year budget adjustments. And so with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few short words of introduction and appreciation. Stephen Carter will be presenting the bulk of the detail to you today. But obviously, this mid-year budget update is what enables us to continue operating for the remainder of the fiscal year. And Stephen will review the details and go over some of the narrative descriptions. As you know, for quite a long time, the county has had an informal hiring freeze in place. We recently expanded that to all departments, and staff is recommending at this time that that informal hiring freeze be lifted in its entirety. It's a short step, but it is, it's a step that may in some ways slow the recruitment process a little, and your board has indicated a strong desire to make great progress in the next year with filling position vacancies. And so with that in mind, we'd like to go ahead and lift that. And so in terms of appreciation, I have to start with my appreciation for Stephen Carter, who has brought this home once again, and it's not without a lot of other things going on for him at the same time. So in addition to working with each of the departments and their staff, their finance staff, to bring these details to you today, he's also carried a lot on his plate in addition to his normal duties, providing some very direct support to some departments that are in transition. And I'm just really, really grateful with, for all of what he is able to accomplish. He's an incredible workhorse. So the last thing I want to say is our gratitude to the department heads and their staff. We wouldn't be here without them. We say that every budget cycle, but we truly mean it, and we just appreciate their cooperation. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Stephen.
Good morning, Board. Stephen Carter, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm kind of blushing a little bit. You can't see it with the beard from Carol's comments. But, but what I do want to also, since she was saying that, is I would like to also thank my staff before we get started. Christine Hutt and Sarah Schuchardt have been an integral part of this mid-year budget as well. So I'd like to start with an overview of the mid-year budget. So mid-year budget is a time for departments to either adjust reserves, revenue, or appropriations in any manner that meets their goal for the remainder of the year. That generally means only slight variations. This year, there is about 400 line items. So it is a slight change when you look at the $319 million budget that was approved appropriations-wise. This mid-year budget, we're asking, requesting to have reserve adjustments of lowering reserves by a little over $1 million. The fund balance change of a little over $660,000, which means we're lowering what we are expecting as the fund balance available. And then additional revenues of $4.7 million, and additional appropriations of just over $5.1 million. So that's the main part of the $319 million. The new $5.1 million appropriations would make our new total of about $324 million. So in the grand scheme, the $5 million is not that large of an increase. But because there's so much extra revenue, I also wanted to explain the revenue trends that have been going on, which mainly I'll talk about the general fund versions of revenue trends. First up, I would talk about the transient occupancy, occupancy tax, which is the TOT. We anticipated or budgeted around $681,000. Through January, we've received $374,000, so we're at 54.9% of the year so far. But that is nothing to, it's not right at where you would do per month, but each month is slightly different. If you compare it to 2021, at this point in time, we were at 391 million, and, uh, 391,000, sorry, not million. In 1920, we were at 499,000. And the reason why I bring those two years up, those were the years that we had extremely high TOT compared to prior years, going all the way back to when we had prior establishments open. So it looks like we're about leveling, which it is coming in as anticipated. We expect the year-end estimate to come in right around 681,000. So that's right on track. And then moving on to another revenue item where everybody has interest is property tax. And I will talk mostly about current secured, because that's the one that is the most, least volatile and can be projected confidently. So during the final budget, we, it was approved of $17,206,000 expected. What we have actually received through January is just over $9.5 million, which is 55.7%. So our year-end estimate is 17 million at just over 500,000. So we're expecting to have about a $300,000 increase over the anticipated. If you go back to fiscal year 2021, at this point in time, we had $9,598,000. So it's going to come in just about where we did last year, which was to be expected because of the CCPI or of, it usually is 2% or so, a maximum of 2%. This year, it's only 1.036. So we weren't expecting a huge increase year over year. So, but that's still good news because it's coming in on par or above. Now, the next revenue is actually quite surprising, and that is sales tax, both Bradley Burns and Prop 172. We, last fiscal year in 2021, through this time, we received 4.2 million, and a total of just over $7 million. So it was one of the higher years we've, it was the highest year we've ever seen when you combine the two. So knowing that there was a COVID environment and extra spending, extra money in pockets, expected, anticipated a little bit lower to be safe because it was a massive jump year over year. So our anticipated was just over 6.4 million as, as budget goes. The actual, so far through January, is 5.6 million already. So I'll let that sink in for a second. That's quite a jump. So the year-end estimate is obviously a gray area, crystal ball, but the best crystal ball is about $9.5 million, which would be about $6 million, uh, $3 million higher than budgeted, and $1 or $2 million higher than we've ever seen in sales tax. So hopefully that continues, but I, for next year's budget, probably will not anticipate the whole amount, bring it down slightly. But that is very good news. I don't usually get to bring good news. I'm happy to do so this time. And then the, the final revenue that I would like to talk about is cannabis. So the overall cannabis is doing well. This, this year, we've already received just over $6 million. Obviously, with previous board meetings, we're not expecting the same for the rest of the year. We'll just leave it at, that's where we're at and where we're going to go from here. But what I wanted to say is that we've received in the entirety of the collection just over $16 million. We have allocated just over $12 million, or budgeted for however you want to look at that, which does leave a little bit over $4 million available. And that generally will go to the 30, per the policy, towards planning, code enforcement, water resources, 30%, law enforcement, 30%, economic development, housing, risk reduction of 30%. They each have about, depending on, they're, they're slightly different because of what has already been allocated in each section, but slightly over $1 million for those three are still available. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is not all departments that are in those categories may realize that they can ask for those funds. It should come as a budget request, or if there's an emergency, it can come in as a project, talk to the committee, and then bring it to the board out of cycle. But generally, it should come in as a budget request and go through the normal budget cycle like it is right now for certain requests that are coming through now. So like law enforcement, that would be district attorney, probation, sheriff. So there's quite a few that have it available. And my conversations with Supervisor Spatia, I wanted to make sure that that was out there, that it's not like you have to use all your funding first, and then you can have cannabis. But what it is, is we don't just provide you, here's 30,000, go, go do your project. You have to do the project, and we'll reimburse you either right when you have that invoice or right after you've paid the invoice. So it's just not upfront, but it can be same time period. All right? So next, I will move on to the highlights, unless there are any questions so far.
I'm not seeing any. Go ahead, Stephen.
Okay. I feel like I'm talking more than usual. Sorry about that. So starting off with reserves, most of the reserves are related to covering south, the new salaries per the labor agreements, but there are some that vary from that. But before I go to those, it is expected to see non-general fund departments having to possibly lower their reserves to pay for the new, the new labor agreements. But I would suspect that next year, that fees can be changed or adjusted accordingly, and hopefully they don't have to dip into reserves so much next fiscal year. The first one of note is Budget Unit 2708, Recorder Micrographics. The accessory recorder, their system is now, as of June 30th, not going to be supported. So they're requesting to lower reserves by 250,000, and also adding a capital asset of 250,000 to purchase that new system as soon as possible. Going down the list. So that's about all I want to say for the reserves. Moving on to revenues. Budget Unit 1671, Buildings and Grounds, is requesting to transfer the PSPS funding that was received in Budget Unit 1920, Disaster, to Budget Unit 1671, because they are, have already purchased the generators for the ROV office and other county facilities in the amount of $183,393. There already was a board item that came forward for that. This is now facilitating, facilitating the transfer of those revenues to the correct budget unit. And this one is going to be semi-a-surprise to the Sheriff's Office. Budget Unit 1785, Public Safety Facilities. That's their capital asset budget for, like where the remodel for the armory will go. We're also requesting the transfer of the PSPS funding that was received in Budget Unit 1920 to be moved to this public safety facility budget to fund the jail generator project in the amount of $366,786. So Budget Unit 1920 didn't, in the auditor's opinion, feel right for the jail generator. So moving the revenue over to pay for it, and then later on, you'll see that there's also a request to backfill the difference from 525,000 to the 366,000 of about 158,000, requested out of the cannabis funds, out of that 30% for law enforcement. Okay? Budget Unit 1796 actually has quite a few changes. That's the CDBG Program Income Capital Projects Budget Unit. There were multiple CDBG grants that we were approved and awarded to the amount of And so they're requesting to receive this in the revenue account, and it eventually will be passed on to our contractors, CDS, or Community Development Services. It's to be utilized for grant purposes only. So it's not, it's already known exactly what it's going to be used for and all it can be used for. Budget Unit 2704, Emergency Services, or OES, is requesting to add fiscal year 21 ARPA funds that, and I wanted to stop right there because it's not what the county thinks of as the normal $12 million ARPA funds that we receive. This is a separate ARPA grant that also has to have a 50% match from the county, which later on shows that they're going to be requesting it from again, that 30% cannabis funding. And also, there's a fiscal year 21 Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $103,488. And this one, I wanted to specifically bring, call out Budget Unit 2110, District Attorney. They're requesting to accept reimbursement from the County of Sacramento for EDD fraud in the amount of $81,587. This is to go after EDD fraud. And the reason why it's through the County of Sacramento, the state gave the money to Sacramento to then disperse to the smaller counties. So that's a very good thing where we have funding to go after that specific kind of fraud in this environment. Budget Unit 2201, Sheriff Coroner, is requesting to accept the Gun Violence Reduction Program Grant monies that will last through 12/31 of 2023. It will pay for .75 of a sheriff deputy FTE, which I'm also requesting a full FTE, so the other .25 would be covered by general fund. And the first six months, they're requesting to recognize the revenue of $47,993. I'm already getting out of breath, so let's move on a little further down the revenue. Social Services is requesting for additional state and federal funding in the amount of $1,413,756, which covers all their social services programs. So that's quite a bit of an increase, but they will have the associated grants or allocations from the state and federal government. At this time of year, you know exactly what the allocation is going to be. In September, you don't always know that what the allocation is going to be. The CFL that explains that to you is not always out at that time. So this is the time where you catch up to the realities of what was allocated to the department. And then Budget Unit 6022, Library, requesting to budget for additional grant funding for the CLLS literacy, zip books, and lunch at the library in the amount of $11,540 and $16,000. So those are, are those are good programs. And Budget Unit 7201, the Museum, is requesting to accept the donation from the Friends of the Courthouse Museum nonprofit for security and installation in the amount of $7,137. That is actually only 50% of the project. We, if you look down in the appropriations, we're actually providing the remainder of the funding needed. And then Budget Unit 8109, Watershed Protection District, is requesting to budget the acceptance of the Federal Quagga Muscle Grant in the amount of $354,000. So again, these are just highlights. It's not every single line item. It may feel like every line item, but I don't want any significant ones to go by without being recognized. Otherwise, it's just kind of not understanding what's going on.
And Stephen, if I could add a comment there, I'm sure the board has noticed that there, there's references to a number of grants that staff is in the process of securing. This is just a small sampling, and you know, you'll often hear out in communities that the county never applies for grants. We are really seeing a trend change there. There's a lot of grant activity going on, as is reflected here, as is in your earlier budget approval, and more to come.
Absolutely. We, we are constantly looking for grants, and as has shown. So moving on to appropriations, the first one that is a highlight is Budget Unit 1011, so Board of Supervisors. We are requesting to budget additional appropriations to acquire professional furnishings in the amount of $10,000, a maximum amount of $10,000 for the board chambers, to replace the blue chairs and white tables in, in the chambers, as well as $30,000 for board discretionary fund expenditures. So related more to that $10,000, due to COVID, we had to remove all of the chairs that are currently in there. And what this is, is to restore the original capacity of upwards of 80 to 90 people versus what it is currently. I kind of wanted to stop there because I have a feeling there's going to be a comment.
Yeah. So, so the, it's true that we removed the auditorium-style seating, as you remember, because it just didn't work in the COVID environment, but it looks like the day is coming when we can have greater capacity than we presently have. Presently, these chairs were just basically borrowed from somewhere. It, it suits the capacity of about 25 people, which is what you know we've been able to have during the time of social distancing. And the tables just kind of showed up. I think maybe they were, they were brought in here for HR orientation purposes or other workshops or something, but the public seems to like them, except that these are more like craft tables, or you know, your basic Costco variety table. And, and we see the public appreciating having something to put their stuff on while they're here. And so our recommendation is to bring in a different type of table, which is more for a professional setting like yours. And the chairs that we're talking about, there are a couple of samples in the far back of, of the room. It would be something along those lines that, that we can line up in rows. We still really appreciate the flexibility in the boardroom to, you know, to not have the stationary chairs anymore, because it enables the boardroom to be reconfigured and used in a variety of other ways, like for training and workshops. And most recently, you'll see the pile of chairs in the back. That's for the vaccination and testing clinic that's being held here on a weekly basis. So, so basically, our request for the $10,000 is to complete what we started with the boardroom, finish the remodel that we did in support of COVID, and so that's what that is about.
Supervisor Spatia?
Since we paused for questions or comments, I wanted to ask two things specifically about the latest one for the Board of Supervisors. I, I believe that we have a supervisor discretionary expense using cannabis funds, and I know that we are approving that. I'd like to kind of hear, and I think the public should probably hear, what, what is it that we're spending that money on? Because I think that's of interest to, to all, especially if we're going to be approving it. And also, as far as the, I get it that we used to have all these chairs, and, and I've never really seen, it's not often that you see a full-packed house with the previous setup. I'm all for adding more chairs so that we can get more people, but I don't think that the tables are necessary, because I don't know that you could do both. And I think that right now, the tables as they are are very functional for the things that we need. And so I, I just, I would prefer, personally, I would prefer seeing those funds used for abatement purposes or things in the community, rather than updating and upgrading stuff for us. But I get it that we need chairs. The stadium seating was very old, and I would not like to see that come back. So if we can maybe split that order, that's the way that I would feel about it.
Split the order between chairs and no tables kind of thing?
If possible, yes.
I think we can see a design and see what it looks like and what the, you know, what the chairs look like. Maybe just one row of tables for people that need a table. We have the little press table, but, you know, I'd, I'd just like to see a design before we, like, throw out the ideas.
Before we actually purchase. Would it be okay if we go through the mid-year and allow the $10,000 to stay, but what it would be, it wouldn't be spent until we show the board what the plans are? Because I have something drawn out and what it would look like.
Yeah. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, and if that's not approved, we just simply don't spend it. We can transfer it to somebody else.
Yeah. And I, I think it's an appropriate time to invest in the boardroom furniture, and this is where we have the public, and you know, it's got to be comfortable, and we may as well just take this opportunity to set it up for, for the long haul.
I agree with that.
You agree?
Yeah. So if that ends up getting approved later, when you take up your approvals, we will commit to not going forward until you've approved a schematic, so you know what it's going to look like.
Sounds like we have a consensus on that. I, however, am fine with tables. The public, I think, would like to have those, and even if we have to mitigate and maybe have half the tables or something like that, I'm fine too, but we'll look at it when it comes back, however, so.
So for the question about the board discretionary fund expenditure, this is just one, actually probably two expenditures that hit at this moment, but there have been a number of other discretionary fund expenditures that your board has pushed forward individually. And this one, Stephen, please remind me, this is Supervisor Pyska's contribution to the Friends of Bog Mountain, which she could elaborate on if your board wants her to. And, and then what was the additional thing at this time?
NCO for Supervisor Pyska as well.
NCO?
I thought it was NCO.
Oh, no, that would be Supervisor Simon then. Supervisor Simon asked for a small contribution to assist with the housing of AmeriCorps workers that are here working on risk reduction, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm picking up my check today for Friends of Bog Mountain, and Matthew's working on a press release. I'm really excited. Before the valley fire, Bog's Forest was one of the premier mountain bike destinations. The races there drew thousands of people to the area for the weekend. And so five trail, five miles of trails have been built by volunteers and through different organizations, the Friends of Bog, and also Redwood Trail Alliance. So the Redwood Trail Alliance is, is kicking off a campaign next week called Bring Back Boggs. And the reason they're doing it, even though they're not in our county, is because they have the capacity. So they're doing it in partnership with the Friends of Boggs. And it's a $100,000 fundraising campaign, and this will be used as a match to get the, kickstart the trail building. This May, there's going to be two very large races, which are going to be bringing 2,000 people to the area on two separate weekends. It's very, very exciting. People are already booking their stays all over the county, because you know, there's a lot of lodging up on the mountain. So it's a huge economic boost to pretty much everywhere in the county, as well as dovetailing with our Blue Zones priorities, which is getting people more access to exercise and be out in nature. So it really hits my, my priorities and my life and my work here with the boards. I'm really excited. I'm in Bog's Forest many times a week, hiking, biking, exploring. So I'm, I'm happy to be picking up that check today and working on that press release and sharing all with you. And if anybody wants to contribute to that, I'm going to have, have those details out in the next week or so, for that kickoff next week. And if anybody wants to volunteer on trail building days, it's a really fun opportunity to be out and meet your friends and neighbors, and it's usually from 9:00 AM to 12:00, and lunch is provided, and it's just a really fun day to be out in the forest. So I think, oh, oh, sorry. I also, um, we had the presentation by the North Shore Fire Fund Project with Chief Seansio, and I did dedicate $50,000 of my funds to purchase equipment. I know those contracts haven't been finalized yet, but that is the intent. And really to get the vegetation crews out and about all around the county, and probably getting some projects done in District 5, too. So I'm excited about that. And so that's $75,000 of what I've allocated so far this year.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Absolutely true. That North Shore Fire Agreement is still being worked on. Susan Parker is negotiating with Chief Seansio on that. And several of you had also contributed to that. So we have all that in mind. And it, again, just to just reiterate, the $30,000 that you see in this line item is just what hit right at the moment. You have, several of you have had other expenditures and plans that have either taken place or are in progress. So there's a lot going on, and it's been exciting for staff, as well as you, I think, to, to be able to have some flexibility that prior boards have not had to, to do some of these things.
Right. I know, I know mine, mine went towards the cameras that we approved, I want to say, back in August or September, so I know that's going to help with, with, with the license plate readers on ingress and egress areas. I know that's, I also contributed to the same thing for the North Shore Fire as well for equipment, so, yeah. And so I think that's, is that what you wanted to do, Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, I wanted to hear what it was exactly that we were approving, rather than just saying yes. I mean, I want to say yes. It's, it's your discretionary funds, but I think it's important to know what it is that we're doing as a group for the public. but I think it's important to know what it is that we're doing as a group for the public to be aware, which obviously they would be aware with the press release. But if part of the approval is to say yes to something I don't know what I'm saying yes to, I just wanted to at least hear what it was. And I appreciate it.
So what have you spent?
Still working on it.
What? You were, you were the one most eager to spend, I thought, last year.
And I have to deal with a district that's multi-jurisdictional and so trying to work my way and navigate through that. So, yes.
And for me, money that I've spent so far is, um, we used to, for many, many years, um, gave money through general fund through CASA to our CASA program that helps, um, our foster youth have their person that follows them through the system because as, as you know, they jump around from social worker to social worker and a CASA worker is somebody that stays with them. So each foster youth has somebody that helps guide them through their journey in the foster care system. So, um, we stopped doing that a couple of years ago. So, um, I gave $10,000 to go to Ward. It was $5,000, um, for the last two years to go help with the CASA program because it costs money to, to implement that. And then also $25,000 went to, um, Hope Center to help those that are experiencing homelessness. We can keep that program going because it's been incredibly successful, the work that they've done so far. I think they've housed, just in the last, um, I think it's 14 months, they've housed 28 people. And those are 28 people we would have not been able to house if we didn't have the center. So that's a, a win for everybody in Lake County.
And then on Supervisor Simon's behalf, I'll say that he's, uh, working with Director De Leon on some signage and things in the city of Middletown and also has some other plans underway. So, um, it's, it's been fun.
So we'll give it back to you, Stephen.
All right. So, try to regather my thoughts here. The next one I would like to talk about is Register of Voters, Budget Unit 1451. We budgeted for the remodel of the RV office. There was only about 50,000 provided in, but in Account 18 for buildings and improvements. But because it ended up being about 66,000, we're asking that it be removed from, moved from Account 18 and put into a capital asset, even though we're leasing the building, it's a leasehold capital asset. And I'll talk to the Auditor's Office about that, but creating an asset at 66,500, which is a 15,000 increase over previously either budget transferred or budgeted amounts. Buildings and Grounds is requesting to budget for Courthouse Museum and Lower Lake Museum exterior, interior visual report and survey, which would come out to $38,000. And the disaster response recovery, we've already talked about the two PSPS funding sources that were received in fiscal year 19 and 20, being moved out to Budget Unit 1785 and 1671. Budget Unit 2111, Public Defender, is requesting to adjust their budget to match the new contract, which is an increase of $60,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. And Budget Unit 2704, where we talked about the revenues in OES, Emergency Services, this is where you see that the entire fiscal year 21 ARPA and Homeland Security Equipment purchases totaled $203,686. And then a cannabis match of the ARPA grant funds in the amount of $60,483. And the appropriations, you see Recorder Micro Graphics, that's where the $250,000 for the new system to, um, convert over due to their system being discontinued. Behavioral Health, Budget Unit 4014, is requesting to budget for CalMHSAPI project. That's a whole lot of acronyms. And the Innovation Project in the amount of $364,737. And also staying in the behavioral health realm, Substance Use Disorder Services is requesting to budget $400,000 for the new life contract, which is 100% recoupable through federal participation. That's always a good thing. And Social Services Administration is requesting to increase their CalWorks contracts in the amount of $508,327 and a new postage machine, uh, that costs around $10,000. And then Parks and Recreation, Budget Unit 7111, is requesting to budget an additional $100,000 for a consultant to prepare a countywide parks master plan, which is required to move forward with a whole lot of their, um, plans of upgrades to our parks. And they're requesting that to be funded through the cannabis tax dollars. And when I was talking about the revenues for the museum, Budget Unit 7201, here is the other half where they're requesting to budget for new security equipment at the Courthouse Museum, but the overall appropriation is $14,500 to leave a little leeway. So the donation would be half, general fund would be the other half. And Lakosan Northwest Regional System is requesting to budget for the installation of Mini RY unit by PG&E in the amount of $140,000. I believe that's batteries for solar power. But it's actually run by PG&E, so it's not our actual asset. So staffing changes, there aren't very many, but there are a few for Budget Unit 1904, Information Technology. We are requesting for the Director, One Deputy Information Technology Director to be added back into the position allocation. It was removed a year or two ago. And then Budget Unit 2110, District Attorney, is requesting to add an additional Staff Services Analyst 1-2. The neither department is requesting additional funding for that. During recommended and final recommended, there might be some additional staffing at that, staffing funding needed at that time. The, the last two departments requesting adjustments for positions is Budget Unit 4014, Behavioral Health, asking to remove a Behavioral Health Program Manager, remove an Accountant 1-2, remove two Client Support Assistants, which are part-time, which, uh, they're only half-time each. And add one Staff Services Analyst 1-2. And then finally, remove a Facilities Maintenance Worker 1-2 Senior. Budget Unit 5111, Social Services Administration, is requesting to remove four Office Assistants, but then add the same four as Office Assistant 3s. So that allows for, sorry about that, additional Office Assistant 3s. And here's where one of my first adjustments I would like to request as a side item for the mid-year addition. I would, they also requested two additional Social Services Aides or Social Services Aid Seniors to make their allocation from FTEs from four to six, and they have the funding for that as well. So there, just so you know, there are four fixes slash changes I would request from what was actually submitted for the budget, and this is one of them.
And Stephen, if I could take you back for just a second regarding behavioral health positions that they're requesting to be eliminated, we did confirm with the department that none of those positions are presently filled. So there's no job loss. Um, these were just positions that they determined were not needed.
And that would also go with Budget Unit 5111. The 4OAs were not filled and so they're adding the four extra OA 3s.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I have a follow-up question to that. It, it is, and I know that Director Metcalf, I believe, is with us, uh, on Zoom last I saw.
Yes, he is.
Here he comes.
There he is. Kept looking, kept looking. Um, I'm taking it that this has historically been vacant and that it's not just like newly vacant or anything like that? And so you're, you're trying to restrategize on the positions and, and how to fill them?
Yeah, the, the Behavioral Health Program Manager position we added, um, in the last fiscal year, but just have come to realize that we didn't need it after all. So it was never filled to begin with. So, um, that's why we're taking that out. The Accountant 1-2 position, we're switching out as a Staff Services Analyst. Uh, just makes more sense for the work that's being done. The Client Support Assistants are, as Carol pointed out, are part-time positions. And actually, the people that were in those positions promoted to full-time, uh, Client Support Assistants and we realized we don't need the part-time allocations. And pretty much the same for the Facilities Worker. We just, um, we don't have a need.
Okay. I, I do have a question, uh, if, if I may, since Director Metcalf's already there. Uh, we took out $400,000 out of your reserves for the new life contract that we just recently signed. I think it's the one that we just recently signed, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and just kind of curious, um, is this because you're, um, trying to figure out the best way to manage your budget with the appropriations you have left? Or are, have you run out of appropriations and you're going to need to go in your reserves for future contracts? Because I know you're going to get paid back for this. So I was wondering if it was a strategy of pulling it out of reserves rather than using your appropriations that you currently have? Uh, I just want to check in to see, are, are you filled with all of your appropriations with all the contracts that we have approved?
As far as I know, and I don't know, Stephen, maybe you might be able to illuminate me around that. But as far as I know, um, yeah, we're.
You still have some leftover?
Yes.
So I don't track that for every single department, but that is something we can do. That's what your, um, Fiscal Manager should have track of.
Yes.
If it's possible to get that number, I'd be very interested to see where we are.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Shall we keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay. Stephen?
So now we're on the last leg of our journey. It's the request for capital assets. There was actually quite a few capital asset requests, um, over prior mid-year budgets. So the first one, we already talked about with the Register of Voters, um, the leasehold improvements for their new building, which is almost complete, switching it from a regular account to a capital asset. In Budget Unit 1778, we're requesting, um, to lower the deferred maintenance of the courthouse roof by 15,000 because the project for the Lower Lake Schoolhouse Museum HVAC Electrical is, went out to bid and it came in higher than previously budgeted. So in essence, this is a, a budget transfer, but since it's a capital asset, board should approve it. And, and so that we're requesting to do that. And like mentioned before, Budget Unit 1785, this is creating that jail generator project of 525,000 that used to be in Budget Unit 1920. There were some expenses in Budget Unit 1920 that will also be transferred over through journal entries, et cetera. And Budget Unit 1904, Information Technology, we're actually removing the content management system from the capital asset because it is actually not something we will ever own. We're not actually removing the content management system. We moved it over to 2830 where it should be properly budgeted. And this is actually the first real transaction related to our ARPA spending, the, the county ARPA.
And the other descriptor for content management system is new web platform for the county. As you know, the one we have is pretty outdated and not, you know, doesn't offer much in the way of self-service. So we're envisioning a, a system that's a lot more robust and probably has more options for people to self-serve.
Absolutely. And Budget Unit 1920, there's the removal of the actual generator from their capital assets. And Jail Facilities, Budget Unit 2301, is actually, already was approved for $25,000 for replacement of their forklift. They're requesting to increase that asset by 16,276 to make a new total of 41,000 for the new, um, forklift. And Budget Unit 2704, Emergency Services, this is where there's new equipment for the fiscal year 21 ARPA Homeland Security purchases in the amount of $203,686. 2708 Recorder Micro Graphics, here's where that new recording system is. It's a capital asset because from what we know so far, it is most likely a system we will be purchasing, not just access to a system. And Budget Unit 3011, Road, um, they're requesting generator electrical contracted out. That's to increase to 30,000. That's, um, under equipment and others, so they're going to add a generator. Lamson Field Capital Projects, Budget Unit 3123, this is actually no change. It's changing the breakout. So the airport, we originally, um, listed it as Airport Layout Plan. They wanted, um, the department wanted to remove that and split it out between the layout narrative and then the reconstruction and design. So it's the same 150,000 just creating in, for the, um, department. The exact how they want to see it as a capital asset. And Budget Unit 4014, Behavioral Health, is requesting to replace switches for the NS and SS Building in the amount of 49,000, which is also considered a capital asset. And Integrated Waste Management Public Services is requesting to, um, budget for two community cleanup trailers. That was previously budgeted at final budget, but it wasn't in a capital asset. So once it was purchased, uh, we rung a bell. It should be a capital asset. So here's the, moving the appropriations to a capital asset where it should have been. And here's Budget Unit 5111, Social Services. This is where you see the postage machine for $10,000. For a frame of reference, the courthouse has the largest, um, postage machine in the county and they are rather expensive, $24,000 for ours. Moving on to Budget Unit 7111, Parks and Recreation, replacement of a stolen dump trailer. They're receiving insurance proceeds for the same 15,000 that they're asking this capital asset to be created to replace that, that trailer. And almost to the end here, Budget Unit 7201, Museums, um, the security equipment installation, there's your $14,500, um, for the third time. So we won't beat that one to death. Eight, Budget Unit 8353, Middletown Sewer, they're requesting, uh, List Station Number One and Two to purchase stationary generators to the tune of 15 kilowatts per, and 30 for around $1,500 apiece. Central Garage is requesting to add two new capital assets for replacing pool vehicles, PO172 and PO077 in the amount of 75,000 overall. And Budget Unit 9908, Heavy Equipment Restricted, is requesting to increase the bottom dump trailer. Actually, it's, um, create a new one, bottom dump trailer for 65,000. And at the same time, remove the new 10-ton fifth-wheel equipment trailer and equipment number 24, um, fifth-wheel retrofit to help pay for the difference. So it's, they're requesting 20,000 extra for that new dump trailer. So that's the end of my main comments. Now, I, I explained that there was four fixes. Um, I would like to bring those to your attention now. If you go into Appropriations, if you are, if you see the Detail tab, the account number for Budget Unit 141, 4015, it's a simple, um, misc, misc key. It should be changed to 2380 versus, I believe it says 2381.
Where were you again?
So it's on the Detail tab, which to you is part of that, um, the actual resolution. If you go down to Appropriations, it says 7402381 for increase for Hilltop Residential Housing. It should be 2380, according to the Auditor's Office Review. And we didn't catch, um, I didn't catch that before it was published. I do apologize for that. And then the two additional Social Services Aides from four to six, which I mentioned earlier. And then I had some conversations, um, yesterday with a supervisor or two about possible adjustments they were thinking for the mid-year. I would like to also make the change where lowering the reserves for Fund 188, Budget Unit 2604, lowering the reserves by $100,000, which is actually nuisance abatement. They still have around 70,000. is actually nuisance abatement. They still have around $70,000 for nuisance abatements, but you have to have the appropriations to be able to move forward with other projects. So at the same time of lowering the reserves in 188, 2604 by 100,000, also increasing account 2830 by $100,000. And then they can budget transfer it to the appropriate account as needed. The, the two accounts used are 2830 and 5506 for either nuisance abatements or, you know, 2830 is more for the odds and ends that don't fit directly into the nuisance abatement. And then the final adjustment, um, public services brought to my attention that they requested, um, something within their narrative, but it didn't make it onto their actual form that I go by for doing mid-year. They would like to request additional revenue in account 5490 of $400,000. It's not a, not a small change. And then additional capital asset in 6312 of $400,000. Now, I'm going to pull up what their reasoning was since it's outside of the normal process. I'll read exactly what they have for that. It takes a second for it to come up. Apologize. Should have had that ready. So it's a state grant reimbursement for multi-year improvements project at Lakeside Park. So the 5490 is state others, so that would be state revenue. And then 6312 is for park improvements of 400,000. So it's construction in progress. And that's also for the multi-year park improvement project. That is all I have. I am open for questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I'm going to ask a, a fairly large favor. All of those items that were changed, is there any way we can get that somewhat written? Because it was, I mean, I tried following on the appropriations. I could not find the code that you read out. Uh, and I think that because we're talking budget here and we're talking some, uh, some fairly large numbers, if we can have that on the screen just to make it very obvious what it is that we are changing in comparison to the documents that we're, we were able to review. Um, so that's one. Uh, my next is, um, it was, uh, um, all over the appropriations of, uh, the impacts of the salary increases that, that we had. And, uh, some people were able to dip in their reserves, which, uh, you stated you were hopeful that next year that would not be the case. Uh, and I, I guess one of the thoughts that I hadn't had when reviewing this was that's only for about six months, seven months, because I believe most of it started November 1st. And so I almost feel like we need to look at that amount and double it as far as what truly would have been asked for until the next budget cycle. Um, and I'm not sure that, yes?
Well, it's not only that, but they could be taking into consideration vacancies. They know, they know they're not going to fill. So it's a double plus.
Well, it, it, and I saw that some, uh, did some salary adjustments based on vacancies. I was surprised to not see as much, uh, especially with, uh, you know, hovering around the 20% vacancy rate. Uh, you don't have to get rid of the entire salary for the year, but you could potentially get rid of the salary for the last four months, three months, whatever. Um, so there was a lot of dipping into the reserves and there was also, uh, if you can give us the exact amount, some dipping into budget unit 1072 or 1082, uh, whatever the cannabis tax, uh, code is. Uh, I think it's 1082.
1072.
I was right on the first one. Um, just because I think that's, that's something that should at least motivate us. Um, we had that conversation about cannabis tax earlier. I know the state is reviewing it and I'm not going to go into the cannabis tax conversation because that's a different upcoming conversation. Um, but already with just approximately six months, seven months worth of use after the salary increases, if you could provide that number, how much was taken out of cannabis?
Right now. So to be honest, that, that was actually something I meant to talk about. I do apologize for that. I have that completely ready. So I apologize. I'm looking to the left, but that's my other screen. So the entire request for salary adjustments from cannabis budget unit 1072 is 901,431. So if it was a full year, remember it was about 3.2 million. So a decent chunk is either only half a year, but at the same time, it's not, it, it's not the tire amount. Some people are able to, to handle it. And then non-salary adjustments for cannabis requesting in this mid-year is $889,077.
And so total adjustments to deal with the salaries would be approximately 1.6, 1.7?
901 is salaries.
No, total between dipping in reserves and dipping into the cannabis tax?
I am doing that right now. One second. About 1.5, yeah, 1.6.
And so that, that, that to me is just an important part of the conversation. Uh, and I get it that adjustments will be made in the next, uh, iteration of the budget. Uh, but I'm just gonna, uh, be very sincere. I, I, I hope that we don't see adjustments at the top portion of our budget sheets for departments and a decrease of adjustments in the bottom half where those are the services that we are providing. Um, so I, I, that number worries me for a first year already with just seven months of anticipated cost. And I also am wondering, is this on a reimbursement rate so that when they use it or, because that's how we've been doing cannabis, is that cannabis tax automatically being transferred from cannabis tax to those departments where then it disappears if it's not used? Or is it requested upon where we ran out of salary entirely, we need to, uh, request for cannabis?
This one is much harder to break down on the reimbursement. So it was planned that we would transfer the amount ahead of time. This was the only case that it was going to be done that way. And it's much harder when you were looking at salary of the different pieces and then requesting for the money. It can be done that way. It's just a whole lot more work than transferring the money in ahead of time. So for like child support, who is part of those requests, it, I don't know that they would be able to front the money in the first place without getting the funds.
And, and I guess maybe reimbursement was not the, the case, but even if they don't use it, let's say we give one of our departments $50,000 for salary increases from cannabis tax, even if they don't touch it, it automatically just stays within that department for the following year? Uh, or does it come back was my question. It sounds to me like it doesn't come back because that's not the way that it's, uh, being tracked or utilized.
Correct. It would be within their fund balance available for the next year, which should be taken into consideration when budgeting.
Yeah. And I don't know if there's a way to, uh, track that so that maybe next budget in July or June, when we have that discussion to kind of see, was it absolutely necessary? Or was it just a safety net? Um, just because I, I, I'm very curious how this is going to go because, um, my opinion is we're, we're not going to ever be able to collect what we're collecting, uh, ever again. And so,
Understood.
Being mindful and watching what that amount looks like, and especially also, in my opinion, being very mindful of the services being provided to the community, uh, are going to be two really important ass, uh, facets of the conversation happening in June for next, uh, budget year.
I will attempt to track that. I have a feeling that's going to be extremely hard, but I will give it everything I have to try.
And, and at this moment, this is just me and my opinion. I don't think that you should be doing something that's completely arduous and, and, uh, overworked to, to get that kind of data unless the rest of the board feels that way. Uh, so please don't take direction from me.
I think it's important to track.
All right. Are you asking for like a consensus on that or?
I mean, right now there's two and I don't want to give him anything, anything on his plate.
I'll agree with it.
And if I just may finish, I appreciate the, uh, changes, uh, for the abatement. Um, and I hope that, uh, we see the entirety of that being used up. Um, I, there's a lot to abate out there. And if we have money left over at the end of the year, uh, we need to fix whatever our process is to not being able to actually provide a sense of change in a community that is being impacted by blight, uh, or whatever the nuisance may be. Um, I, I did want to make sure, um, and I, I apologize if I'm out of turn in bringing this up, uh, but I know that there seemed to possibly be a holdup in, uh, um, due to salary, uh, budget issues, uh, for CDD for hiring a, um, deputy director. I want to make sure if there is a need for transfer or if there is a need for funding to be made available. I think that department requires the help of leadership, um, quickly rather than waiting for next budget year to be fixed and resolved. I know I had that conversation with both, uh, yourself, Mr. Carter and CAO Hutchinson yesterday, and I just want to make sure, uh, that we're able to move forward.
Yeah, there's some sort of communication breakdown there. We, we, uh, confer regularly with departments about their budgets and their needs. And that one had not been brought to us, but, but absolutely, we share the commitment to fill that deputy director position.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Stephen, is there anything else you'd like to add or?
No, I do not believe so.
I'll open it up for the public comment. Um, is there anybody in the room that would like to? Yes.
Looks like Stephen has one more point, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Stephen, go ahead before I, before I open public comment.
Supervisor Sabatier wanted to see on the screen the changes.
Okay.
I have that if you would like me to share screen.
Great.
Yes, please share screen.
It's my working workbook, so it's not the prettiest. Um, I'll tell you that right now. So are you seeing my screen properly?
Now we are, yes.
So the yellow highlighted are the new fixes, we'll call it. So the first one is the 188, 2604 nuisance abatement, removing 100,000 in reserves. Close your eyes while I scroll down. We're, we're, we're now in the revenue section. So here is the request to add $400,000 for the state grant for multiple, multi-year improvements. And then going down into appropriations. Here's adding the 100,000 to account 2830 for the abatements. Oh, I passed up the account number. This one right here was 4015, right here, 2381. See, it's even in the wrong format. So that should be 2380, not 2381. Oh, my finger can't go, sorry. And then here's the 400,000 added, uh, capital asset for parks and recreation, the multi-year. And then if you move to position allocation, there's the increase from four to six of social services aids. So their new, um, that, 256 FTEs. So they added two. I believe that is all of them, yes?
So Mr. Chair, before you move on with the public comment, I just want to call to your attention that we have a number of department heads and, and department finance staff here with you in the Zoom. If you had any more specific questions of them, um, we would certainly yield to the details.
Okay. So I'll, uh, I don't see any, I don't see any questions.
Or if any of them want to add.
Is there any, uh, director that would like to discuss anything or add to the topic of discussion before I open it for public comment? And if you do, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll open it up for public comment. It looks like we have someone. Please, uh, state your name for the record and, uh, yeah, three minutes.
Hi, I'm, uh, Michael Wagner, and I wanted to bring up the point and, and maybe refer to the point of, uh, Mr. Sabatier, is, uh, the cannabis funds or the taxes that have been collected, um, Bruno made the point that this is probably the peak at which we have or will have. And so that has to be taken into account that next year, there may be half as much if we just use that basic math. Um, I would like to point out that those funds didn't necess, won't necessarily be less, the half or less. It could even be more if we're able to streamline our processes, meaning the taxes could re, could be lower, but if we have more people doing it, then the income would still come in. So, you know, listening to the budget, I'm also wondering how much of the cannabis tax money is being allocated to streamlining that process so that as an investment for the county, we see more income coming in as opposed to it turning into less, if that makes any kind of sense?
So next week, we're going to have a, um, a report out from the Community Development Committee, which has been taxed, tasked with streamlining the process. I think the question of sustainability, uh, for the industry is a conversation that we need to have. What's the, what are the, what, what will the market sustain? Um, you know, how will our environment sustain? All of those questions, I think, need to be answered and we can continue to have a dialogue. But next week is when we're going to be having that presentation.
Fair enough. Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay. And it looks like we have, uh, two hands up in the Zoom room. So we'll start with Betsy Khan. Please unmute and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I have two questions. And I apologize, I've not been able to scrutinize the, the line items in your attachments. So I may be asking a question that is easily answered and I may not. Um, I'm concerned about funding for the Office of Emergency Services, our emergency operations plan annex for access and functional needs, calls for the, um, uh, position of a coordinator. And I have never seen that requested in any of the position, uh, you know, staffing, uh, requests so far. I'm not sure if your board is aware of that. We also have an obligation to update natural hazard mitigation plan for California Office of Emergency Services. In compliance, had anybody in that office for so long? We haven't yet had an allocation for, I mean, a, a request, a grant application or anything like that to do that. So I'm wondering if there's money available to, to get that done so that we can be in compliance with our emergency response requirements. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could respond to some of that, um, our Sheriff OES Director is not present here today to speak to that more specifically, but, um, but we have not had specific requests at this time in the budget for the things the, the caller mentioned. Uh, I believe one of those things she mentioned was about the, the Sheriff's Center that will be forthcoming at the Armory. And the Space Committee has met, um, recently with the Sheriff about his plans and, and there is some movement anticipated soon to, um, seek the services of an architect, which can help us come up with a design and scope for the project. Um, you don't see money budgeted for that yet specifically because we don't have those costs outlined yet. Uh, and in terms of the staffing needs of, of OES, we would rely on the Sheriff OES Director to make those requests.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier, it looks like you have your pen. Do you want me to wait for the next person?
Well, I can add to the, um, not sure on the salary portion of it for, uh, a coordinator, but for other, uh, needs or, or anything like that there is, as we just discussed through the cannabis tax, that, uh, 30% went to law enforcement and that there's still quite a large sum that can be utilized, uh, in some way, shape or form. Just, uh, need a proposal if there's a need for a proposal.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, uh, person that has their hand up is Aaron. If you could state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi there, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Um, yeah, not diving into the cannabis, uh, tax issues as Supervisor Sabatier said. This might just be a quick question. just be a quick question for Carol or Stephen. What happens when there are grants like the 2 million coming from the state, the Department of Cannabis Control, that maybe come after this mid-budget meeting? How do you guys, does that go into a different allocation or is that taken into account? Thank you for the report.
Stephen, I'll let you go for that one. I'm not sure when we're appropriating that.
So I would actually like to defer to Patrick, but I don't believe he's on.
He is. Patrick is here.
We are receiving 2.1 million for the local jurisdiction assistance, though. Patrick, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I can provide a little bit more information on that. The state actually just provided us the executed contract for that on Friday, so we do have it in our hand now. Community development can enter into agreements with consulting firms and other outside consultants that can help streamline the processing of permits. That's what that grant allocation is specifically set aside for. So with the use of outside contractors, it could hopefully increase our processing times here and relieve a lot of the burden on our staff. So at this point, I'm not sure where Community Development stands on that. I, I believe they have already reached out and start laying the groundwork for those agreements. I don't know if anyone from CDD would be available to speak further. I don't, I don't want to speak on their behalf there.
I do want to say something specific about what the caller's question was. It is not directly in this midyear budget, no, because we didn't have a guarantee of it until this last Friday. Now, once there is a need and ability to spend it, then either a board item can come forward or we just set up the accounts to transfer the funding over once used, because it's going to be deposited in the cannabis fund first, I believe.
I don't see anyone on from Community Development. Okay. So we'll, so I hope that, you know, they did their best to answer, and so we'll move on from there. Supervisor Sabatier, you ever pan up again?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up real quick. I was looking around and didn't want to bother him since I was going to just call him and ask, but since he's here, wondering if Director Ewing might be able to speak about the jail generator. That's been a discussion that's been happening for quite a while. Last I checked, the jail generator was kind of limping along on its last leg, and I just want to make sure that if the unfortunate emergency does occur, that we're at least getting closer and closer to finalizing that jail generator project.
Yeah, yeah, we are, we are getting closer. Limping along is probably an appropriate term, but we are looking to buy a generator through a GSA contract, so that's a quote that we just received, I think, yesterday or the day before. And then on the design side, we're at about 90% design. The only thing to wrap up has to do with the foundation of the new generator. So that, that's where we are. It's probably in the next, next month that we will be coming to your board to adopt the plans and specifications to go out to bid.
Very happy to hear that. Thank you so much for that update.
All right. I don't see anything else, and so we'll close public comment. If there's any other comments from directors, or it looks like actually we have one more person that raised their hand, but they, they went off, so I think we're all right.
And so much for me saying our presentation would be brief.
It's Maria Valdez, so I'll.
Yes, let's bring Maria in.
Okay, Maria, if you, if you can unmute and go ahead and.
Here she comes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So as everybody knows, we'll be moving into our new building here shortly. I think the move-in date is scheduled for us to be open to the public on the 14th of February. This is upcoming Monday. But I'd like to thank administration, buildings and grounds, and IT for their collaboration in this project and getting it to where we're at now. I know it started off a little slow, but I know they've been hard at work getting us to where we need to be. So I wanted to thank everybody for their collaboration. And we're excited.
We share Maria's excitement. It's pretty exciting. We had hoped to have an open house at the new facility, but in the COVID environment, it's just not advised at this time. But supervisors, if you've had the opportunity to poke your head in the door over there, you've seen it and you probably are excited too. If not, I would encourage you to do that, maybe when you're here next Tuesday, when she's operational.
All right. Lars, just one more. I'm sorry, I should have asked this when you were on. I just wanted to, wanted to make it more difficult for you, so you can turn your camera off and on. But just an update on the Lucerne Harbor. I know we met recently, and if you just wanted to give a quick update on that, I know there's probably some folks wanting to ask about that, and we'll ask otherwise, that I ask if I don't ask that question, so I'll bring it up.
Sure. So, so as, as you know, and for an update for those that are not aware, that, that project was in the tribal consultation realm, still is. We, we have a cultural resources monitoring plan, well, a management plan that will likely include monitoring that I, I just received yesterday from, from a consultant to prepare a scope of work. So the anticipation is that we will take that, that scope of work and, and reengage with, with the tribal consultation component. So I, I just provided that information earlier today, coincidentally enough, to, to the senior planner who's running that, just to ensure that we're, we're going about that the right way. So the, the plan, the next steps would be to establish that cultural resources management plan, which essentially would be providing an opportunity for the tribe to, to have involvement during, during construction for any, any materials that are found that they may have an interest in. And once that is finalized, then we would have sequo complete, get our permits in line, and, and then go out to bid for construction. So, so it's, it's establishing the tribal consultation. That's where we are, and getting past that is, is the next stage, which, which is why we had that proposal from the consultant.
Now, thank you, Director Ewing. I appreciate that. And is there any other updates or any, I don't see any other hands up, so I just want to make sure there's another question. Supervisor Sabatier?
One last comment. I think one of the most exciting things on here is the release of the hiring freeze. That's something that, to have an empty chair next to you when there's more work than just one person can get done is very demoralizing, and to be able to start filling those seats in accordingly and appropriately, I think is, this is a pivotal moment for good positive change for many departments. So looking forward to seeing how that changes things.
All right. Public input's closed, then it looks like we'll bring it back to board for action, unless there's anything else anyone wants to add.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution, amending resolution number 2021-115 to amend the adopted budget by adjusting reserves, fund balance, carryover, revenues, and appropriations. And can I do it all, Ms. Grant? And adopt resolution, amending resolution 2021-116 to amend the position allocation for fiscal year 2021-22 to conform to the midyear budget adjustments.
Stephen has his hand up.
With the amendments as highlighted in yellow on the wonderful clean spreadsheet. That was a resolution. I guess I could have just said I offered the resolution.
No, we, we wanted everyone to know, so. Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pesca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Pringle?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Board.
All right. Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Directors for your input, CEO Hutchinson and Ms. Grant for your input as well on that. I think the, well, we are at 1 o'clock. Do you want to push through? I know we have, we can push right through because we have calendars, and then we can go into closed session, so we'll.
Can, can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, we can take a five-minute break. Go ahead. 1:03 right now, we'll come together at 1:08. All right.